Let's call this March 16th meeting to order. George, could you take a roll?
Sure.
Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Rosen?
Here.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit.
And to the Republic of America, in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all. Perfect. Okay, that brings us to the part of about our district goals. We always state our district goals every night, every board meeting, every decision we make supports those district goals. The first one is student achievement, that's our number one goal, that's what we're all here for, and that's in all three areas, arts, academics, and athletics. So then our second goal is financial prudence in everything we do, we've got to ration our money to optimize the student achievement, and sometimes you have to do a little balancing to make that work. Then a final one is community involvement, and that's really important to us at all times, but we've really seen a lot of that lately with all the contributions for the weight room and the turf, and all the help we got on the football coach, and the help we're going to get on the basketball coach, and all the other things they get involved with the booster program, I see some of the boosters here tonight, which is excellent. So it's all coming together, and I'd like to reach out to everybody and say, you know, on the community involvement side, one of the greatest ways to get involved and to get information, especially on the athletics and extracurricular side, is by joining the booster club. So if you want to be involved and you want to help, we'd love to have you on the booster program. So jump in and sign up, you can find it on the main webpage, and you can go to on the athletics and link into the boosters and the various levels, and the more we have, the better we'll be. So thank you very much. With that, that brings us to recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. We do have one recognition tonight, and I'd like to have Mr. Tomino, Assistant Principal of Strongsville High School, come up to the podium to lead the recognition. Straight from Columbus, right Brian?
Right. Straight from Columbus. Good evening, Board, Mr. Reiba, Mrs. Pelco, Mr. Anika Nastu, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present the recognition this evening. When I was in the classroom several years ago, I had the fortunate circumstance of connecting with a lady from the American Legion, and we did a number of things with them as well as the VFW here in Strongsville to promote those topics in our classrooms. I'm very happy to report that over the years, they have sponsored Girls for Buckeye State, we have gotten students involved in the American Government Test, in which they received honorariums from the American Legion, and in 2012, I believe, we were selected as the only school, that particular year, high school, to be named an All-American High School. I'm very happy to say that my relationship continued with the Brea American Legion, and it's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you two members that I will talk a little bit about and tell you why we are honoring them tonight. So Nancy and Bill, would you please come on and join me at the podium? So Nancy Dought does a lot of things with the American Legion, she is Treasurer of Post 091 in Brea, she is Chairperson of the Community Service and Veterans Affairs Committee, and she's Secretary of the 13th District American Legion Auxiliary, just to name a few. Nancy has been a great supporter of ours in Strongsville, and when we were looking to, you know, we had that major renovation, we realized that some of our rooms we had repurposed, we had flags that were missing, some unfortunately that were not in the best of shape, and when I reached out to Nancy to see if she knew where we might be able to get replacements and perhaps some funding for that, she was quickly able to jump in and say, you know what, let's see what we can do for you. So the American Legion and their family, to use her word, which includes the Sons of the American Legion, the American Legion, American Legion Riders, and the American Legion Auxiliary, shipped in and purchased us 36 flags and the hardware that went along with it. So we are in the process now of making sure all of our classrooms at Strongsville High School will have prominently displayed American flags in each room, and we're very pleased with that. Also with us tonight from the American Legion is Bill Smith, he was a 29-year veteran of the Army and National Guard, he also is a member of the American Legion Post 091, he's part of the 13th District Group as well, and we'd like to thank his wife, Dolly, for joining us tonight, she's part of the Clifton Post Number 421. So it is my great honor and pleasure to present both of them to you and to thank them both for their contributions, especially Nancy over the years to Strongsville High School, and specifically for the donation of the 36 flags and the related hardware. So on behalf of Strongsville High School and our administrative team, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
No, that's okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, it's truly appreciated.
We do so now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, and thank you. You've earned our patience, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So again, on behalf of our administrative team at the high school, thank you very much, and thank you, Board, and Mr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Tomino. And once again, thank you to the American Legion for that wonderful donation. With that, Mr. Neso, we do have a few donations that we would like to recognize, and I'll go to the podium for those recognitions. Glenn, if you can join me over by the podium, please?
Well, as we all know, a little over a year ago, we started fundraising to bring two new turf fields to the high school and the middle school, and we've had a lot of great partnerships throughout that year, raising close to $1.7 million at this point in time of the $1.8 million project. And a few months ago, Glenn reached out to us as a representative of the Cleveland Football Club about looking for a home for the CFC, and looking at some of the turf fields that we've had, and, you know, as I share with the Pro Sports Performance, as we've gone through this, we've not only had great partnerships with our local businesses and our community, but also with local groups and clubs such as the Cleveland Football Club, that are truly going to enhance not only our support for the program, but also our young athletes. So I was greatly impressed with Glenn from the first time I met him, and Benny, and Olf, and the rest of the crew that came in to meet, and over a few months, we talked about what options would look like, and I'm just thrilled and honored to be here and recommending to the Board a donation of $30,000 from the Cleveland Football Club to our district, and we're proud to say that you guys are going to be here in Strongsville quite a bit, making the middle school field a big part of what the Cleveland Football Club does, and ensuring another great soccer opportunity for our young athletes here in Strongsville. So I just want to publicly thank Glenn, Olf, and Benny, and the rest of the Cleveland Football Club for this generous donation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I also learned that they play soccer in March, which is freezing outside. That's right, thank you Glenn.
The second donation we have tonight, and we would like to bring up, is Terry Toth and Dan Martin from the City Club, so come on up, guys. Now, I have to apologize, and the reason I have to apologize is these two gentlemen and the City Club were one of our very first donors that got on board with the Excellence in Athletics campaign. Actually, when we went to a lot of the other groups, we said, hey, the City Club's in, you got to be in too, and it was so new to us, we forgot to bring you to the board meeting and officially recognize you, and put the donation agreement on there. So thank you for your patience, thank you for working with us, and although it's a little after the fact, thank you for being a leader in our community, and one of our community groups to step up and be one of those initial donors that got the ball rolling. You know, the City Club does a tremendous amount of work for our community, partners with our district, and this $25,000 donation to the Excellence in Athletics Fund really was the kickstart for what we were able to do, and what we were able to do with organizations across the city. So thrilled to continue the partnership, thrilled to officially recognize you at the board meeting, and just on behalf of our district and our students, thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Good to see you. Thank you. Good to see you guys.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're not tarding us.
Nice job, thank you.
It's work done.
So, Mr. Neso, we do need to take both of those items for a vote, so going back to 6A, be resolved my recommendation that a donation in the amount of $30,000 be accepted from the Cleveland Football Club as a part of the Excellence in Athletics campaign, and the donation agreement can be found in Exhibit A.
Excellent. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can you take a roll? Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On 6B, be resolved my recommendation that a donation in the amount of $25,000 be accepted from the Strongsville City Club as a part of the Excellence in Athletics campaign, which can be found in Exhibit B.
I do have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Richard. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane.
We're mixing it up.
Mike, could Mr. Neso just make a comment? The City Club does so much for the kids within our community, they not only sponsor the Excellence in Athletics, but they do so much more for community like the Step Back Think Program. Just again, thank you guys for the volunteerism, thank you for the support of all of our children to the district, I mean, there's a lot of kids that go through this district, and you guys lead a lot of those civic groups and help us with that, and again, from a Rotarian to us, you know, thank you very much for everything that you guys do.
Excellent. Have a vote? Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Excellent, thank you. We talked about community involvement, I mean, we had flags, we've got $50,000, $55,000 donated, thank you very much, I mean, it's huge.
All right, looking at going on to the superintendent's report to the community, there are a few items that I just wanted to update the Board and our community on, and the first, I have a few slides up, is the Strongsville High School Weight Room. Last time we talked, it was being installed in the end of February, again, you know, a big portion of this was funded through the donation by Pro Sports Performance, which is the Pro Sports Performance Center at the high school, and we'll have signage going in, and you can see some of our new weight equipment that has gone in. So Dan did a nice job of getting some before and after pictures for us, and if you remember, our weight room used to be in the loft or upstairs of what you want, of the training room, so it was a very small area that a few athletes or few students could use it as a time, and this used to be our wrestling room. So the wrestling wanted a dedicated home, they and the weight room needed some more space, so in the Bond Project, we switched spots, however, we needed to purchase that new weight equipment, and through some of the financial support of our donations, we were able to do that, and it truly is a great facility. I was there last week while our football team was working out, and just to see the kids in there, the space that's in there for them to safely lift, and the equipment, it's appropriate equipment for our high school students, and it's a weight room facility or performance center that rivals any of our other local districts, and as you can kind of see, not only do they have a series of racks that kids can work on both sides of that with the equipment, but there's kettlebells, there's dumbbells, there's bands, and then there's also, you can see a little bit in the corner, a green kind of turf side for additional workout areas. So we are thrilled with the new space that we have, the new equipment we have, and the new opportunities that it has, not only for our athletes, but our students as well. As we've talked about on numerous occasions, we've increased use of the weight room facility through our high school course offerings, and then again, expanding the ability for our athletic teams to have a space to adequately train. With that, what I also, under this, wanted to propose to the Board for an item of consideration is adding something that I've had in previous districts, which is called a weight room supervisor. I've given to you a sample job description in front of your table, and what I am proposing is that we add a stipend, stipend position, I'm proposing a $1,500 stipend per season, fall, winter, and spring sports, so that we could have somebody supervising the weight room. Why I feel this is important for our athletes, first of all, as we said, we've got more equipment, we've got more space, we've got increased usage, and I think that needs somebody to directly oversee that, schedule it, ensure that teams, students have access, and because of the increased use, I have increased concerns with safety, and I want to make sure that if our students are there and they're not with their coach at the time, that somebody in there to make sure the weight room procedures and rules, the cleaning of the equipment, the safety precautions are being taken into consideration, and also that our students are properly trained and understand how to lift in a safe manner. As you may remember, with our agreement with the Pro Sports Performance team is that they will be providing athletic training, guidance, feedback, training programs for possible use, and that would be a great opportunity for a weight room supervisor to understand those programs and be able to put a lifting program and instruction into place for our students so they can safely and appropriately train for whatever sport they are participating in, or whether it's just for the health and fitness of themselves. So that is something that I would like the Board to consider, and then maybe at a future meeting, you can give me direction as to what you would like to do. I would like the weight rooms up and running, I would like to start that this spring. Spring sports are underway right now, we start competition here in a few weeks, but it would be something that I'd like to get started in the spring, but just wanted to bring that idea to the Board's attention, as well as show you some pics of our brand new weight room.
One correction, it doesn't rival what our other districts have, this exceeds what our other districts has, that weight room's the equivalent of a junior college or a small college's weight room, and that's an outstanding facility that we got there, and it's all donated, so it's incredible that it was, that we did it that way. And I agree with you that with a room of that stature and of that size, that you can't just have kids roaming in and out of there, you've got to have someone, in my opinion, to watch, to make sure that it's safe, make sure that it's clean, make sure that the equipment isn't damaged or unbalanced or whatever. So I think it's important that we have somebody, and then, you know, someone to teach them, someone who knows what to do and how to lift and how to get stronger, and I, because you can lift, and you can just do the same repetitive exercises and do just as much damage as you're doing good, so it's important that we get something, something like that.
I agree. I think the safety aspect in particular is important, and so I would agree with that suggestion, Cameron.
I remember two years ago, when we walked into that room, when it was still the wrestling quasi-mulpurpose room, and the thing that I think, I get a little smile because I look at that picture and I see that new duck work. The unit inside that, yeah, of course, yeah, everybody's going to laugh.
That's what I was thinking too.
That's what I do as a living. But that unit never had a furnace or an AC unit that could have, can pull enough humidity out of that room, never had the capacity. I mean, that room, with a rubber floor, with the turf, with the new unit, and duck work, I mean, you're looking at $100,000 plus. I mean, it's a great space, we needed it, my biggest thing for that space was, I wanted all athletes. Where the weight room was, it wasn't a shared space, it wasn't girls' sports, boys' sports, everybody could use it, it was dominated by a, you know, a certain group. Now you've got that space that can be cross-trained for anybody, all of our athletes, and that's the fair thing to do, but you've got a lot of money invested in that room, is my point.
My daughter Kirsten's been in there for track, they've been lifting.
So.
Cameron, I had a question. What kind of hours is this position working, like start time, end time, is it flexible?
Yeah, that would be worked with, Mr. Jawan and I have had initial conversations, that would be looking at what would be the lifting schedule of some of the teams, where would there be the greatest need for this time to be, so that's something that we would be looking at on a season-by-season basis.
Do students use this prior to school starting, in the daytime, like, you know, can they come in an hour before school starts to use it, or?
I'd have to check, but with our high school, typically it's an after-school.
Okay, I just didn't know if this is something, you had to be flexible with their time in that regard.
No, it would be more, we're looking at what hours would they be there after-school.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cameron, just to be clear, so we're looking at 4,500 additional a year?
Correct.
And then, Curiosity, under Essential Functions, conducts unbiased, professionally administered tryouts when selecting the team?
Yeah, that must be just something that we need to delete.
Okay.
Any other questions or feedback on the weight room supervisor? Okay, thank you for your consideration of that, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Communications Coordinator, Dan Faust, who wants to give an update on some of his outreach efforts with our alumni.
Thank you, Mr. Reiba, good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to provide this update about our alumni outreach efforts. When I first started about a year ago, one of my, parts of my interview process and parts of my initial goals were to, and are to, increase our alumni outreach, and doing so in various ways, both short-term and long-term. This is definitely a long-term project, it's something that cannot, in my opinion, be, happen overnight in the way that I think this district needs to have it happen, and so we're making some positive steps right now, we have made some positive steps this year, and providing a good foundation for the years to come in terms of our alumni at Strongsville High School. The first step is really creating this database of alumni, who are our alumni, where are they, what kinds of things can they bring to the table, can they bring back to Strongsville High School in order to benefit our students and our staff. So I created a data collection form or survey, and shared that link internally with our staff. We have a number of Strongsville High School alumni that are teachers and administration and workers here in the district. I shared the link through our Mustang Moments Weekly Newsletter, and then what really started the ball, I think, rolling tremendously was sharing it on social media, so on the district Facebook page, and there are a number of Facebook pages that have been set up for different alumni groups, mainly because of reunions, but there are some active groups out there on Facebook. I also created a LinkedIn group, which I will continue to monitor that and push information out, but that is another resource or another tool that we can use to help build this alumni database. For those that you don't, for those of you that don't know, LinkedIn is the professional networking, social site that's become very popular over the last few years. So as part of this survey, there was some basic collection of information, but there was a little bit more to the survey as well, so some basic name, graduation year, contact information, what kind of careers are they involved in, their current and past employers, if they were willing to share that, what was their preferred, what is their preferred method to receive alumni information, and then have the question, have you been back to Strongsville High School after graduation, and if you have, if you haven't, why not, and then an event that those graduates might be, might consider attending if we're given the opportunity. So here's some, here's some results of those questions and that survey. So right now, we have about 575 respondents to the survey, that I've listed the top three classes that have responded, 2010, 1991, and 2012, I don't think there's any scientific method to that, other than Jenny was a 1991 graduate, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. The graph there, the graph there shows you, shows you the, shows you kind of the output of responses and graduation years. Pretty split in terms of have you been back to Strongsville High School since graduation, about 56%, yes, they have, 43% no, and here's where some of the information is going to be very useful in terms of formulating some events to help attract alumni back to Strongsville High School. Athletic event, music event, homecoming, alumni-specific events such as a distinguished alumni recognition program, or something that highlights or spotlights our alumni. Class reunion, obviously very popular, that's connect with current students, so if there are panels that we can offer, different alumni coming back and speaking to students about what made their experience at Strongsville High School helpful for them in terms of their career aspirations in the future, a tour of the building, and then the infamous So what have we done in 2016 and 17? I've established an internal alumni outreach committee, which is going to work in determining some of the, some of the items and some of the events that we help plan, both short-term and long-term. I'm distributing an alumni newsletter very shortly to not only this database, but I'd like to work with, Terry Harbert has a database as well of alumni that she's gathered over the years, that I'd like to combine forces with her and distribute that alumni newsletter. These newsletters will be distributed quarterly. As I mentioned before, created a LinkedIn group, I've conducted a few tours for alumni groups over the past year or so, and I think that's a great opportunity, these were in conjunction with reunions that these classes were having, and they were both 1967 or '68 was one of the groups, and then a, and then a little bit, a group that had graduated a little bit in the, I think, 80s or 90s that I conducted as well. So I think that's another great opportunity for us to have, again, alumni back into the building and to see the building as it is and to reconnect. Plan to collect class of 2017 information, distributing a card at graduation practice, at least to get their initial information, their personal email addresses versus their Strongsville email addresses, if they're willing to provide those, and to stay in touch with those recent graduates, I think is important to, beginning to establish that relationship, and beginning to start them to start thinking about, okay, I'm graduating from Strongsville High School, what does that mean, and how can I stay connected with my school? In terms of some long-term thinking, and what does this mean for our district and for alumni as we move forward, had some recent meetings, and actually today, met with Susan Harb, and we are planning to return the Distinguished Alumni Program to our district, and that is scheduled to happen sometime either in the fall or winter of this year. Give us some time to plan the event, as well as accept nominations, and figure out the best way to recognize some of those alumni from Strongsville High School that deserve to be, deserve to be recognized and honored. I plan to, next year, provide some weekly recognition of Strongsville High School alumni, we've got this database, we've got, again, people that work in the district, ways to, as we have been doing this year, spotlighting current employees of the district, I envision that being a way to, again, provide some consistent recognition of our alumni in some of our communications vehicles. Create an alumni component to the homecoming football game, so working with Mr. Jawan and figuring out a way to honor alumni during that special game during the fall season. And then, I'm investigating the possibility- And then I'm investigating the possibility of an alumni festival that might occur in the summer of two thousand and eighteen. So this would be a larger event. It would be an event that centered around family-friendly activities at Strongsville High School. And the idea is a possible coordination with alumni groups that have significant reunions happening during that timeframe. So the five, ten, fifteen, twenty-year reunions. Sometimes those groups look for activities to have during their time together. And this might provide a time for them to have, this might provide an event for them to add to their reunion plan. So this is very early stages of seeing if this might be possible. And, but I thought it was a good idea. And we will investigate that and hopefully get back to you on if we will move forward with that. And with that, I would welcome any questions that you might have about alumni outreach.
Teri Harbert puts out that, that.
Pride.
Said pride, Mustang pride?
Correct, yes.
So you're going to link in with, I mean, obviously probably looked into all that because she's putting out those stories, she's got a connection, she's got a way of communicating with them. And there's a lot of.
Yeah.
Our distinguished alumni who end up in that magazine and that distribution.
Yes, absolutely.
I had a question, I'm sorry. Are you also going to be including an area for alumni staff that aren't necessarily residents of Strongsville? And I only say this because in speaking with many class reunion people and handing out all the trophies, they said they really enjoyed having some of their favorite teachers, like Mr. Tomino, coming to their reunion because of all the memories they would have in his class. So is that a component of our outreach or can it be?
Yeah, that's a great point. And during the, during the closings of Albion and Center and Drake, some of the favorite conversations or the things that I remember most and witnessing were those teachers coming back to the school and connecting with the students that were walking through the building. So that is a definite component of the alumni outreach. It's a, it's, it's a great addition and it's a valuable addition to it.
Yes, and I made my husband take it after you prompted me. I had already taken it way back when, but I'm like, okay, you need to fill this out too. You can't just get the information from me.
And something that I didn't include in this, but is going on right now, and Jane, I appreciate you, the question and this prompting me that, so the high school right now is soliciting businesses, area businesses, for a job fair that's coming up and some senior project opportunities. And I have gone through the alumni database and reached out to those local alumni just as an extra prompt for them, whether they work in a business here in town or have, within their network can share with those people within their professional network about those opportunities that the strong, that the high school has in partnering, further partnering with our current students and helping them along the way.
Thank you. I think this is a great effort here.
Colonel?
I have a suggestion more than a question. I was thinking maybe that Colette Fine and the Team Strongsville event might be a good one to get the alumni to come in for that. It's a good time for everybody and it's a decent time of the year weather-wise.
Right. And I know, I know that when we had met as a, as an initial group, the Alumni Outreach Committee, that event was talked about as well to really help Colette in her efforts and enhance that event with some alumni components to it too. So, yes, thank you.
Dan, the only thing I was going to share is the experience of my high school. And it sounds like you have some of the same ideas, but I know at my high school, the reunions are every five years. And traditionally, Friday night is a, just the class. It's an event at the high school just for the class. And then each, each class, five-year class usually has a couples' event the next day at various places around the city. But it would be, you know, similar to your annual event. It would be neat. I know when I go, it's neat to see students five years younger and students five years older and mixing across the years.
You weren't there for both of them, were you?
Pardon me?
You weren't there for both of them?
I was not.
Oh, okay.
But the, but it is, having, having those reunions at the high school, you know, it does give that, give you the ability to show past alumni how things have changed. And, you know, that forever a Mustang becomes tangible when you see the different, the different years.
Anything else?
Good job.
All right, thank you very much.
The last item that I wanted to give an update is just on where we are at with the state budget. As Mr. Miko shared last time, I had the opportunity to go down to Columbus last week, I believe, to testify to the Subcommittee for the House Finance Subcommittee on Primary and Secondary Education. And just, you know, George, I apologize if I almost steal your thunder with my comments today. But, you know, if we remember from the last budget, that there's enacted last year or this current year, our budget was reduced by about six hundred thousand dollars in TPP funds. So that's something that as a district, that unfortunately, we've had to absorb and take that reduction to state funding. Because of the last budget, there was a part that was phased in. And that phase-in piece is to remove or reduce, remove in our instance, all the TPP reimbursement dollars and the TPP supplement dollars. Put that together, the reimbursement dollars are about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The supplement dollars are a little over two-point-two million dollars. So next year, that's an additional three-point-one million dollars that's going to come out of our budget. In addition to the six hundred thousand dollars this year, that's three-point-seven million dollars. You know, I don't know about private business or public education or anything. Taking a three-point-seven million dollar cut is difficult no matter what you do. It's especially difficult in a, in a school district where your revenue is flat, relatively flat, based on the millage and operating levies that have been passed. And we have kids that come every day that we have to educate. So the flexibility we have as a school district to reduce significant expenses or increase revenue are limited. And so it's difficult to address those types of losses. In the new budget, if that wasn't well enough, in the new budget, they're proposing another half-a-million-dollar reduction to our core aid funding. Now, not to talk too much in the details, but the TPP funding was a local tax that was generated that was phased out years ago. It was supposed to be replaced by the commercial activities tax. But once taxes go to the state instead of locally collected, the state has decided that they're going to continue to keep that money in their coffers rather than give it back to the districts. The concern with the guarantee, or the concern with the half-a-million dollars in core aid that they're looking at reducing is this is the state's first attempt to start to reduce funds that are considered in our district a guarantee. So in-state funding, and George, please jump in if I say anything wrong. You were my help down in Columbus as well. But in-state funding, there's a funding formula. And there's something called the guarantee, which us means that they look back, I believe it was the two thousand and fifteen fiscal year, and they said, Strongsville City Schools and hundreds of other districts like Strongsville, we guarantee that you're going to get two thousand and fifteen dollars in two thousand and sixteen and in two thousand and seventeen. So if you look at the difference between our guaranteed dollar amount and what we should be getting or what we would be getting on the funding formula, George, it's about three-and-a-half million dollars, right?
Correct.
Thanks, correct. So, so the state is saying, we're making you whole by about three hundred, three-and-a-half million dollars. What they're starting to do is this half-a-million dollars is chipping away at that guarantee amount. The concern is this local district, as the superintendent and the concern of every Strongsville citizen should be, as soon as the governor and the legislator start feeling that it's okay to take away from that guarantee, we've just opened the door to take away that entire three-and-a-half million dollars. So it's not a half-a-million dollars and, okay, that's not as bad as two-point-two million dollars or three-point-one million dollars. It is a half-a-million dollars that in every budget will start to be reduced. So if that guarantee is completely reduced, we're not looking at three-point-seven million dollars. We're looking at seven-point-two million dollars. And what the state is doing with their funding formula is they continue to put us further onto the guarantee. So what I mean by that is that there's something called a state share index. So the state says it costs, the state's going to pay six thousand dollars per pupil to educate a child. Even though the state is reducing funding, the six thousand dollars has stayed the same for a lot of years. Even though costs go up, the cost to educate a child goes up, six thousand dollars has stayed relatively flat. So they take that six thousand dollars and they say, Strongsville, you're a high-wealth district. You have capacity to raise more local tax dollars to pay for education. So we're not going to give you that six thousand dollars. We're going to multiply it by the state share index and give you a percentage of that. So last year, it was around thirteen percent. This year, it's nine-point-four-two percent. Which means nine-point-four-two percent of six thousand dollars is five hundred and sixty-three dollars in core aid per child. So it's an inverse relationship, right? So when they reduce the state share index, it puts us further on the guarantee.
Correct.
And so what the state has done in this new formula is they've taken, their goal is to get districts off of the guarantee. Right now, there's a little over a hundred districts on the guarantee. Based on this new proposal, it's going to put over three hundred school districts on the guarantee. And if they're going to start reducing because of declining enrollment, that's going to harm many school districts. And George is going to talk about in his presentation what a significant impact that has on our district. So as you look in dollars for next school year, not even counting the six hundred thousand dollars we lost this year, it's three-point-five million dollars less we will have to educate our kids next year than we had this year. What that equates to in terms of levy dollars is a three-mil levy. So if we in the near future have to go out to the taxpayers and say, we need your support to help finance the quality education that we're providing for our students, even before doing anything additional, it's three mils just to fill the hole left by the state. The challenge is in any school district, not just Strongsville, when you start looking at millage and higher amounts, the success rate incrementally declines. So as I shared to the legislators, we have legislators, we've not sat around and said, woe is Strongsville. What are we going to do? We've proactively made reductions and George puts those on his slide every time. The state says, you've had a twenty percent decline in enrollment over the last five years. We've reduced our staff by twenty-three percent. We've closed buildings. We've funded a bond, a locally-funded bond project for new operations here. We've changed our insurance carrier. We've changed procedures and policies to save money. We went to a food service management company. And all those things that we've done, in George's five-year forecast, he shows that nice little graphic that says, if we didn't make those reductions, our budget in two thousand and twenty-one would have been eighty-eight-point-eight million dollars. But it's seventy-nine-point-five million dollars or a nine-point-three million dollars savings because of those proactive reductions. So we've done our part as a school district, our board, our administrators, our staff and our community have done their part to support our education. And just, this is a point that I shared with the committee. And I think it puts into perspective the impact that this has on a district. Right now, in George's October five-year forecast, the deficit in two thousand and twenty-one is thirteen-point-five million dollars. If those TPP funds were left as-is, the deficit would be two-point-one million dollars. In four years, two-point-one million dollars is a lot of money. But in four years, I believe we can make, you know, continue to look at our practices and continue to reduce that and get that to a positive balance. I would like to thank, I had the opportunity not only to talk to the committee, but I had the opportunity to talk to Representative Patton while I was down in Columbus, shared my testimony with him, and he was very supportive to our efforts, as was the committee that we spoke to. I didn't have a chance to talk to Senator Dolan, but I have to say, I've been very impressed with Senator Dolan since he's taken office. He's, he's reached out to the superintendents now on two separate occasions, getting our input on bills. He recently wrote a letter to the state superintendent asking for him to delay the application for the Every Student Succeeds Act from Ohio, which has happened this past week, which is great news for us. And then I'd also like to thank our community members and parents. Last Friday, we sent out information about the testimony. We shared sample letters that people can print off and email or mail. And we had a great response of people sharing the responses that they got from Senator Dolan or Representative Patton, as well as their effort to do that. So this is just the first step. It now goes from the Subcommittee to the House Finance Committee. And then it'll go to the Senate's Finance Committee and then it'll go to the final committee for the decision on the budget, which will hopefully wrap up in early June. But we'll continue to have our voice heard. We'll continue to share our story so that we can hopefully influence the budget before it becomes finalized in June.
Just, just a couple of comments on that. When, when we lost the TPP money, you know, the TP, the tangible personal property tax went away because it was bad for Ohio because it taxed personal business property, right? So your inventory, your equipment, your buildings, all got taxed. So people said, well, we won't move to Ohio, we'll just sell into Ohio. So the state got rid of the tangible personal property tax about ten years ago. And they went to what they call the cat tax. And that's the commercial activity tax. So instead of taxing your property, business property, they tax your, your activity, your sales and your revenue and that type of thing drives your cat tax. So the fact that the tangible personal property tax went away and then they, and then the governor said, well, we're going to, we have to reduce the TPP money because we don't collect TPP money anymore. What they're not telling you is that, okay, we don't collect the TPP money, but we got this cat tax money over here and we're just not going to show you. And so it was all just a shell game. And in the process, they decided to take the money from the schools. And where they gave it, I have no idea. It's actually sitting in Mr. Kasich's two-billion-dollar fund that he wanted to use when he made his half-hearted run for president and made a fool of himself. So when he went through that process, that's what happened. The other thing that, you know, this is the second time now that we've heard about your enrollment's down. So we're going to cut. That was the same thing they said when they took the TPP away. Well, even though that money's gone, your enrollment's down, you should be able to absorb this. So they've used that excuse once, now they're using it again. And the difference is, is that would be okay if everything was, all your costs were variable. If every dollar was just based on the number of heads in your building, you could probably do that. But there's a lot of fixed costs in running a district. And some of those are, our utilities are essentially fixed. Our, our bus, bus cost is essentially fixed. Books and curriculum is essentially fixed. All staffing other than teachers, and the teacher side, we've reduced by an excess of the drop in enrollment. Insurance costs are fixed, maintenance costs are fixed, grounds costs are fixed. So if you looked at our total expenditures outside of, you know, if you looked at the, we're probably sixty, forty, fix the variable with all our costs. And so when you look at it that way, that, that drop in enrollment doesn't equate to a dollar-for-dollar drop in our funding. It just doesn't work. If you take just the variable portion and you reduce that, then you can live with that. But when you start reducing in total and you have a huge fixed cost that it does for a district or a city or many, most businesses all have a lot of fixed costs, it just, the math just doesn't work. So I just wanted to add that point to it, that it's.
Mr. Nace? I'm sorry, Mr. Rosen. If I may, I had a few slides on a couple of the points you guys talked about in my presentation at the end. But since we're on the topic, would you like me to go over them now or save them for my part?
I would save it. Let me just do my rant and rave real quick if I could.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You save your rant. Where's my slide?
Dan, do you have the slide with the contact information?
I do.
You pull it up, yeah.
Okay, well, let me, let me get in on this too and thank you, George, for yielding the floor. I think it's a shame that as a city or as a school district, we have to go hat in hand to Columbus and ask for our own money back. You know, this is something where we need to keep the pressure on our legislators because the governor's a lost cause. So we need to keep the pressure on our legislators to let them know that this will not stand and that they cannot take the basic operating expenses like Carl was talking about. There's money we, we contribute as taxpayers. They take it and then they throw it at the large cities who have incredibly bad graduation rates. And they think the solution is more money at the big cities like Cleveland or like Cincinnati or like Dayton or some of the other places around here that suck up all the, all the funds and produce no results. If you look at the graduation rates in Strongsville and the opportunities that our kids have for enrichment and to prepare them for careers, it's wonderful. for enrichment and to prepare them for careers, it's wonderful. And it's, and the people in this community, obviously from the donations tonight, they've supported and bent over backwards, our 81 million dollar bond issue to build a new middle school and to fix our high school. The folks in this community are taxed enough. What we need to do is get the money back from Columbus that is rightfully ours. It's not theirs. And the problem comes when they think that the money that we send to them is theirs to do with what they wanna do. Representative Patton, when he was Senator Patton, and even before that, when he was Representative Patton before, he used to say that the duty of the state government is to incarcerate, medicate and educate. Well, it seems to me that if they've got cable television in the prisons, they don't need that. You know, if they're, they're paying out money to able-bodied people for medical treatment that's really not required, but they're taking money away from the kids to educate them and give them an opportunity for a good future, something's wrong. So as citizens, and I, I asked from the board, I know George feels strongly, we all do, keep the pressure on our representatives, keep, let Senator Dolan know, let Representative Patton know what we think about this, and send them a letter, send them two letters, send them six letters. Make sure they understand that we're not gonna stand still for this.
Sure. I, I just, everybody knows how I feel about this subject. And for me, it's an important subject because I believe education's the silver bullet. Every child should be educated. Every child should have a safe place to be educated. And I think our, our politicians kind of forget that without proper education, um, our society is doomed. Let's not forget that the funding of schools is a two-part equation. And most people, including our governor, will choose to forget that. In this district, the cost of our new middle school, the renovation of our high school, the closure and removal of five other buildings were on the backs of our taxpayers. We will, if we spend half a million dollars per year on a maintenance program for our middle school, sometime in the next 10 to 20 years, receive 7% back from the state to help us build another building if that fund isn't bankrupt by the time we get there. But you can walk into Cleveland, you can walk into Akron, you can walk into Columbus, you can walk into Youngstown, and you can look at brand-new buildings that are 5% to 10% paid by the taxpayers in that community. We get roughly 500 and some dollars per student, right, Ms. Rangin, Istoo?
From the.
From the state?
Correct, from the core aid.
Okay. What does the city of Cleveland get of that $6,000?
Pretty close to the.
Pretty close to $6,000. Our graduation rate's higher, we offer our children more, we offer our parents more because a child leaving Strongsville High School has the ability to get college credits before they even walk out our door. And that's the shame. It's a two-part equation. Everybody forgets that. We've already asked our taxpayers to pay for more money. They've already built us a building because our buildings were aging. The governor needs, and, and here's the, the part that really twists the night for me. The increase in the educational budget this year for the state was 1%, correct?
Right.
How much money was that for all the schools within selected schools? How many, how much money was that in the state?
200 million.
200 million dollars. Could they hold us harmless? Absolutely not. Let's take more out of there. And the reason why, and Richard, you'll know who his name is, the governor's education secretary, I'm not, I'm not sure who the individual was, there was an actual interview where he said.
Keenan? Tim Keenan?
Tim Keenan.
His budget director?
Said, well, Strongsville, their taxpayers could pay more. That was his reasoning for taking the first 3.6 away from us. Shameful. Shameful. Because we're talking about children and the education of those children. Yeah, you're, you're never gonna get me to back down on this one. Never, ever, ever. It's a shame.
You wanna do your slides?
Well, that concludes, uh, my report, Mr. Nasa.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, let me look and see where we're at here.
Public comment.
Ooh, public comment.
Sir.
Um, public comment. Excellent. We do have public comment and good public comment. Josh Vago, correct?
Yes, sir.
And when you get up there, uh, state your name, uh, address. And you have about three minutes or so.
Sounds good. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Hello, board. Um, I'll introduce myself in a second. Before I get into that, um, I am Josh Vago, 1-8953, Stony Point Drive, Strongsville, Ohio, 44136. Um, real quick comment, I appreciate everyone that's invested in the young people of Strongsville, uh, Mr. Faust, the board, everyone. Um, I graduated from Strongsville in 2015. Um, I love this city, I love these kids. We have two basketball players here tonight. I talked to several of them that couldn't make it, uh, mostly spring sport athletes, couldn't be here, but they wanted me to pass along the message, um, that they and I support John Lipowski as the next boys varsity basketball coach. Um, our recent coach just got let go. These players wanna move forward, and, uh, they support Coach Lipowski. I'm gonna call him coach because that's what I call him. Um, I was his captain for two years. I was fortunate to be representing this program as captain for all five years I played in the program. Uh, I'll bleed green and white forever. I know it's so cliche, but I mean that. Um, I played for Coach at what the young kids would consider an ancient artifact, Albion Middle School. So many life lessons I learned from him. Um, I think one thing that brings a 19-year-old college kid and you guys together, um, is our love for the youth. A, and I, I genuinely mean that. Everything I say is so, it sounds so cliche, but I really mean it. I love these kids, um, and I want them to have a leader that really cares about them, that understands the game. I came to Albion as a boy and I left a young man. And I have two great parents, great mother, great father, but Coach Lipowski is the most influential person in my life outside of those two people. And, and that's all we really wanna say about him. We, we love him, we support him. These kids deserve a leader that, that cares about them and can push them without pushing them away, which I think is one of the greatest assets that Coach has. Um, he pushed me to my absolute limit, and no disrespect to any other coach I've played for, but any coach that doesn't push you doesn't love you. And Coach Lip did that for me. Um, I talked to the AD, Mr. Jalawan, last week. He said, the basketball program does not wanna rebuild. You guys know what that means. Um, usually a long process, usually starting out a little bit rough. He wants to move this along, and I think Mr. Lip is the greatest guy for that position at this point, um, because he's been here teaching, coaching, building relationships with people like myself, like these two guys. For as long as I've been alive, I turned 20 next month. Um, so, so we love Coach, we support him. Um, once again, thank you all for supporting the youth, building the youth, myself included. I'm at Kent State right now. I attribute a lot of the good things I'm doing right now to a lot of the, the resources that you guys set up for me and the people you put in power, um, to influence me. That weight room is beautiful, by the way. I, I'm a National Academies, uh, Sports Medicine Certified Personal Trainer. I'm working over at Stay Fit 24 at, at Pearl and Drake there, and as a meathead, I can, I can definitely appreciate that. Um, so that's great. Mr. Faust, what you're doing with the alumni, I'm not just saying this because I know you, but that's really cool.
Sure you are.
Either, I'll find you, I'm on LinkedIn too, so, you know, I'll find you where you can find me. Um, but seriously, thank you guys, I appreciate it, and, uh, I hope you guys strongly consider him.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I can tell you that Mr. Lipowski was my daughter's sixth-grade teacher, and he did an outstanding job getting her confidence up in, in math where she struggled. And now she just got an award at the high school for student of the month for her math. And then another thing that Mr. Lipowski, and if you ever wanna know his philosophy about coaching, there's a book that's, and the title of the book is For God's Sakes Lead. And it's an out, it's an out, it's a great book. He told me about the book, I read it, it's outstanding. And it, uh, it, it, it talks about his philosophy about being a coach. So, he's special. He's a special guy. So, thank you for speaking for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Carl, as a, as a graduate from Kent State, what do you, what do you typically say about Kent State?
It's the Harvard of the Midwest.
Good college. Thanks for coming tonight, guys. We do appreciate the input.
Thanks.
Yep. Approval of the minutes. We have the, um, you feel free to like, head out, but, uh, February 2nd, 16th, 18th, 28th and 2nd, meetings, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Duke. Any discussion in either minutes?
Good job, Don.
George, you wanna take a roll?
Sure. Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Nasa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
George's report. Let's see those slides.
Thank you, Mr. Nasa.
George, we're not gonna give you the floor back during this slide, so. Just turn that little green light off.
I'll, I'll just, I can stay mad, I'm good at it.
Item A, uh, it's a financial report for the month ending February 28th, and the financial report can also be found in Exhibit C, and I'm gonna go to the podium to do the, uh, monthly financial report. As mentioned on the end, I have a few slides regarding the state budget and also touching on some of the points that Mr. Rival made. So district goals, this one obviously falls under financial prudence. General fund summary, um, through February, we received about, about 60.1 million dollars, which is roughly about 900,000 more compared to February of last year of the, of the 59.1 million. Uh, primarily that's due to, um, we received two advances in January and February for property taxes, and we're gonna receive the, the final settlement, and hopefully by the end of this month, it was supposed to come tomorrow, but doesn't appear likely, so I'm hoping by next week we'll receive it. But the first two advances for this calendar year have been greater compared to last year. Um, at this point, I'm not sure what that means yet because everything's detailed on, on the settlement when they send it. So once I get that settle, settlement report, I'll see where we finally land. It could've been, just the advances were higher compared to last year. And then it also has the details on the settlement on what made up the differences. So, on another slide, I'll have where we're projecting compared to the forecast, which is about 500,000 more to the forecast. But again, it's just an estimate at this point. I'll have to see once we get that final settlement. Uh, expenditures were, uh, year-to-date, this year were 43.6 million. Last year, at this point in time, we're, we're about 44.5 million, which is about 1.2 million less. And that's primarily due to, if you see other objects, there's a 1.1 million that's less. Um, as due, last year, we did a transfer in, to the termination benefits fund in February. This year, I have it on the agenda, uh, actually today, which will take place in March, so that's gonna be about a million dollars. So roughly everything else, it's pretty consistent. There's some increases, decreases that kinda wash out, um, salaries and benefits. For the month of February, they were higher overall. Year-to-date, it's less. It's starting to catch up. Last year, we had more pays, we had one more pay at this point in time, but it's starting to even out as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. So general fund revenues, in the fore, in the October forecast, I forecasted about 71.4 million in revenues. Year-to-date, year-to-date, we received 60.1. Uh, March to June, I'm estimating we'll receive about 11.8 million, which will get us to the 71.9, which is about 500,000 more than what's been forecasted. Again, that for, the biggest difference is the property taxes, which is in the first line. I'm estimating another 400,000 that we'll receive by the end of the settlement, but I won't know for sure until the settlement comes. It could be more, it could be less. Uh, so we'll see once that final settlement, settlement comes, hopefully by next week. Uh, revenues by category on the next slide, as you can see in our four biggest buckets, it's pretty consistent. The state foundation, the actual foundation payments have been pretty much the same. Property taxes, a little bit higher due to the advances. Uh, the property tax allocation is, is, um, 700,000 dollars less due to the reduction in the TPP and other revenues, pretty much flat. General fund expenditures, uh, statistical spending point at this point in time of the year, it's eight months have passed, given, eight months out of 12, eight months have passed out of 12, which our target's about 66.7% of the budget should be spent or encumbered. And, um, we had 16 out of 24 pays, which is the same percentage. As of now, we're about 62.52% of the district's total appropriation has been either spent or encumbered. So compared to that, right now, we're trending under budget, um, which, which is obviously good at this point in time of the year. So, um, kinda on track, but a little bit, we're a little bit under budget, so we might see some savings by the end of the year. Expenditures through February, the column on the left is the percent encumbered and spent, and the, the black line is the 66-point average, the average where we should be. And then since, other than salaries and benefits, the purchased services, capital outlay and then other objects, they kinda vary based on the ti, based on timing when the expenditures happen or when goods or services are needed. So the yellow line is kinda the three-year average for each category. And expenditures by category, as you can see, the four biggest bu, or the five biggest buckets that we have, um, salaries is slightly less compared to the last two years. Benefits, it's right about the same, but slightly less. Purchased services, uh, capital, purchased service material supplies is right around the same for the past two years. Uh, capital outlet a little higher, and then the other objects, last year was a little higher at this point, but it's mainly due to that transfer. Uh, general fund cash balance, we started the fiscal year with 18.3 million, total revenues about 60.1, total expenses, year-to-date, 43.6. So right now, revenues over cash, revenues over expenses, 16.5 million. That might seem high now, but that's gonna start, as you can see on the chart on the, on the right, that's gonna start slowly going down. It's, we, our biggest bucket of revenues is the tax dollars, and we get those at four different points of the year. So we kinda get our cash up front essentially, and then spend down. So we hit, in July and August, our cash spikes, then it slowly goes down, and then January, February, it hikes back up and it goes back down again. So we're at that point of the year where, right now, we have cash, but we're gonna start eating into it. And then our unencumbered cash balance, overall, we're at 32.7 million. Any questions so far? So touching on the governor's budget, I won't, I won't repeat anything that Mr. Rival said, just kinda highlight. As we stated, the education budget increased by 1% or 200 million at the state level. Uh, the framework of the current funding formula remains unchanged. All of the funding buckets are the same. There's the $6,000 of the core aid, then underneath that, the $6,000 is the core aid, and there's about seven or eight other subjects that there's a per pupil amount that gets stacked onto that core aid. As Mr. Rival said, we get our state share index applied to each one of those categories, um, which right now is 9%. Last year was 13%. And as part of the, the biggest change to the funding formula was the change in the guarantee. Um, if you've seen, and the way it's working is, if you've seen an enrollment decline over 5%, they're gonna reduce the guarantee by 1% for every percent that you're over that 5%. For example, if you had a 6% decrease, they're gonna reduce you by 1%. If you had a 7% decrease, they're gonna reduce you by 2%. And it's gonna cap out at 5. So we had a 20% decrease, we're gonna, our guarantee amount's gonna be a 5% reduction. And then that's on top of the TPP phase out, that remains the same as current legislation. So as Mr. Rival stated, what that means for us is if we look at the funding formula and TPP funding, for 2016, we had 12.8 million, uh, that we received in 2016. This year, we're receiving about, um, 600,000 dollars less, which is the 2.3 million. Uh, next year's fiscal year, the fiscal year 18 was proposed, is the TPP's coming off completely, and then our funding formula mod's gonna be reduced by half a million dollars or 5%. So we're gonna get 8.7 million, which our change in funding's gonna be about 4.1 or And I just want, on the next slide, I did a historical state funding, so I just took those two buckets. On the way it worked is, is Mr. Nasa, as you stated with the, with, when we had the TPP tax, um, it was taxes that were levied against our, um, our property values. And some, at some point, they got, they eliminated the TPP tax, but the state said they would hold districts harmless and give them the TPP dollars based on a reimbursement amount to keep the school districts whole. In 2000, in fiscal year 2010, our TPP amount was 6.4 million, and our state aid was about 9.5 million. Now, as you can see throughout the years, in fiscal year 12, there was another phase out of the TPP, which then we received 5.1. Then in 13, we received, um... Then in '13, we received 3.6 million, and '14, 3.6. And that was stayed consistent through 2016. And then this year, we hit the $600,000 decrease. Next year, it comes off altogether. So really with our funding formula, although from 2010, that was 9.5. '17, it was 9.6. And next year, it's going to be about 9.2. And as you can see in fiscal year 10, our total state resources was 16.0 million. For next fiscal year, we're going to be at 9 million. So from 2010 to 18, we've seen a reduction of 6.7 million in state aid altogether, which has been reduced by 43% what we're going to get for next year. And that reduction from 2010 to 18 would represent about 4.63 million. The mileage that Mr. Ribeau mentioned in his comments, that was, the 3 million was coming from the '16 to the '18. So if you look back all the way from 2010, the reductions that we've received, that we've received was far greater than that. So it's kind of, since the, over the close to 10 years, it's kind of doubled from what they did just recently. And then to the point of per pupil amount, what I did was I took the two amounts and from the previous slide, the TPP and the total state aid, which made up the funding formula amounts plus the guarantee. So that's why the per pupil amount is a little more than that 500 that we were talking about because that 500 was just the core aid. But if you take those buckets, in 2010, our total resources from the state was about $2,344 per pupil. And as our enrollment kind of dropped, the per pupil amount dipped a little bit and then kind of leveled back out to where it was in fiscal year 10. And compared, in fiscal year 16 to 10, it was kind of, it kind of leveled back out. But if you look at from this year to next year, it's a big drop. It's a $738 per pupil drop, or 30% drop from '16 to, from six, from, excuse me, from '16 to '18, which is far more than 20% that enrollment decline that we had. So although our enrollment, they were saying our enrollment declined by the 20%, our TPP has also decreased. So it kind of kept the total resources from the state level on the per pupil. So now it's really dropping the amount they're giving us per pupil to next year.
Which that shoots the concept of your enrollment's down, therefore your funding's down.
Right.
But when you're funding less per student, then it doesn't matter. I mean, it's, that is, there's, there's nothing, even ignoring the fact that a large portion of our expenses are fixed. This just hammers you, it's just unreasonable. I mean, it's not, I mean, we'll have to deal with what we get, right? We'll do what we have to do, but it's, you know, it's just not acceptable.
If you talk about Cleveland, Akron, the major metropolitan areas, are they on the guarantee?
When I left Cleveland, they were, but I think based of the, some of the funding changes, and they've seen an increase in enrollment from where they were, I think they're back onto the formula.
But if you take their historical data, how much enrollment have they lost?
He said so.
They've lost quite a bit as well.
Yeah, they have lost quite a bit. So in other words, let's increase the state budget by 1%. Let's throw more money at districts that don't even know, they can't find their rear ends with both hands. Let's throw brand-new buildings at them. Let's throw six grand per student. They have failing rates. They can't do their job. They're not running their districts like a business. They can't find and attract and keep quality employees, teachers, support staff, administrators. So all they're doing is throwing money to fix a problem by taking it from us. I mean, at the end of the day, that's exactly what they're doing. We pay, our taxpayers pay more money into taxes to the state. Let's take that money and take more money from their school districts to a problem that we don't want to have to pay attention to. Let's just throw more money at them.
And
Where do we fall on this, George?
So where we, so I did, this slide was at a present, was at a seminar I was at the other day, and I kind of stole it from the presenter that presented it. It was from a group of public finance resources where they kind of do this work for all the treasures in the state. So they grouped, so what it shows is a percentage of loss in total state resources, TPP and state aid, combined versus the total resources that you would receive this year. So as you can see in the graph, this is all the 610 states, or school districts in the state, where I'd say mostly all of them fall in. So either they have gained or lost about 4% of their total resources. There's 12 school districts over here on the far left that lost over 4%. We're one of those 12. I think we're on the higher end of that 12. Our reduction was over 30%. So you could see a lot of the schools were in the 4% loss or gain. Well, we were in the 30% loss.
Might be a good chart to see in the post, eh?
So that's a nice little bell curve, you know?
Yeah.
We're on the wrong end of that bell curve.
Yeah, I know that.
Governor Kasich's rainy day fund paid by Strongsville.
So if I may, I'd like to tag on to George's comments. This was originally going to be my legislative update, but since we're in the mood, I may as well just continue it. And if it's all right with you, I'll discuss my legislative update now. But I want to, I want to highlight, again, we've said it a number of times, but the overall primary and secondary education budget is going to be $11.2 billion for the next, the fiscal year 2018, which is a 1.2% increase. An $11.4 billion for fiscal year 2019, which is a 1.4% increase. And Governor Kasich is very proud of that, that they're increasing the funding to primary and secondary education. One of the things that's always frustrated me about these discussions is we always talk about, oh, the state of Ohio, Columbus, is taking our money. You know, they're not giving us as much money as they did last year. They're not, they're not even holding us harmless. They're always, you know, they're, last year, they gave us this much. And this year, they're going to give us even less. And one of the frustrations I've always had is Columbus doesn't get money from a magic tree. It gets it from somewhere. And Columbus's general revenue funds, the majority, or one of the largest sources of that revenue is income tax. So I talked about this with George last time. I wanted to know, you know, where does that lie? So I went to my friend Google and found the information on the state of Ohio's tax portion, the Department of Taxation. The most current information they had was 2014. So I was a little frustrated. I wanted newer information. But as I dug into it, the 2014 numbers were good enough for me. In 2014, Strongsville had Ohio taxable income of $1,582,31, 581 billion, 582 million, $31,592. We had a tax liability. This is the income tax that Strongsville sends to Columbus of $50,787,639. So in 2014, we sent over $50 million south to Columbus. The budget we're talking about now, the two-year budget, we are supposed to receive $8,716,000 in 2018 and $8,716,000 in 2019. The difference between what we sent to Columbus in 2014 and what we're going to receive for the next two years is 30, over $33 million. It's not about Columbus taking money away. It's about Columbus returning less and less. And I think that's a much more reasonable message. You know, it's easy to pick on Cleveland. It's easy to pick on Akron, et cetera. I don't, I don't want to deal with the problems of educating in an urban environment. We all know the troubles they have. You know, the city of Cleveland sends $104 million. They'll rece, their difference between what they get is $800 million. So the school, the schools will receive $800 million more than they sent in 2014. I don't want to pick on Parma. Parma, my grandma and grandpa live in Parma. It's a lovely city. I don't want to pick on them. But Parma sent $55 million in 2014. They will receive $71 million for a difference of getting an extra $15 million. Those, that's unreasonable. The problem with, for Strongsville is, again, it is unreasonable that we continue to send funds to Columbus and we don't receive what I consider a reasonable, I don't even want to discuss fair, because fair is a judgment call, but a reasonable amount of support from Columbus for what we do to educate our children. I look at Mr. Dooner, and he knows exactly what I'm talking about because the local fund keeps on getting hit, and it's the same story. We send the money to Columbus and we get less and less money in return. So I respect Columbus, and they have their projects and their priorities. And they're all, everything sounds good in isolation. But the frustration with, for me, with education funding is it's a big game of mirrors to try to confuse everyone. There's state share index. There's education. There's core aid. There's this bucket. We haven't even touched on the reduction in funds due to students, parents of students choosing to go to charter schools. There's all these little details. What is important for me, and what I think resonates with the taxpayer, is we send $50 million to Columbus. It is reasonable to expect, at the very least, that in the next budget, which you are going to increase by 1.2 and 1.4%, that Strongsville is held harmless. The TPP reductions are ridiculous. The half a million dollars additional on top of that is ridiculous. And again, I think that one, I appreciate everything we presented, but it comes back to what the budget director said, you know, when he, when he suggested that Strongsville can afford to because we'll just raise the taxes on those people. And as an elected official, I can't go door-to-door and say, please pass a four-mil levy because the budget director in Columbus says you have the money. And I can't, there's no way we're going to be able to sell that. There's no way we're going to be able to convince the taxpayer that that's reasonable in any way, shape, or form, especially when in 2014, we already sent more than we're expecting to get back.
Richard, it was $50 million for one year, correct, was the line?
Correct.
Then it's, then it's a $42 million deficit.
Correct. Well, I was just, again, I'm trying to, again, we can, I don't want to get into a comparison game with other cities. I chose to live in Strongsville. I'm just going to fight really hard for Strongsville. But at the end of the day, I think it's reasonable that we press Senator Dolan and Representative Patton that we should and will be held harmless on this next budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ribeau. So Mr. Nasa moving on with? Yep. My agenda, so item B, it's an annual transfer of funds to Fund 35, the termination benefit funds. This is the fund that we pay all the severance payments out of, and then it's reimbursed by the general fund. That be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a transfer of funds in the amount of $900,000 from Fund 1, General Fund, to Fund 35, termination benefits be approved. We had budgeted $1,055,000, so this is coming in at $150,000 under budget. And $900,000 is the amount that we paid this year, comparing it to $1.5 million that we paid last year. So paid $600,000 less in termination benefits. Item C, our tax rate resolution. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the resolution, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor be approved. That can be found in Exhibit D. This was, if you recall, from January, when I did the tax budget. This was us sending the tax rates down to the county, them certifying them and asking us now to review and approve them, which they are the same from the tax budget. Item D, new fund for fiscal year 17. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following new fund for fiscal year 17 be approved. Fund 22, cost center 9017, unclaimed funds. This is just to account for outstanding checks that are outstanding between one year to five years old. Right now, they're currently accounted for in the general fund. That's moving to my just accounted for separate. And then after five years, if a check still is unclaimed, we can put it back in revenue in the general fund. We're not talking big dollars here. Right now, there's about $800 worth. So it's just about keeping, keeping them separate. And item E, the amended appropriate, permanent appropriations for the month, be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the amended appropriation for fiscal year 17 be approved. And those can be found in Exhibit E, which I have the explanations listed on the exhibit. And if there's no questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I like the slides, even the one he stole.
I thought it was a good one.
Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Nasa. I do have a few upcoming events that we just wanted to share between now and a little past our next board meeting. But we had a mid-year band concert that I believe was supposed to be on Tuesday, the snow day. And so they got rescheduled to March 21st. So looking forward to hearing our middle school band program. We've got all city choir. That'll be coming up at the high school on March 22nd. And I don't think anybody needs a reminder that spring break is the last week of March. Hopefully, we'll be out of the snowy weather by then, so we'll be off that week. And once we get back, we've got three events at the high school. Acapalooza, which is a singing competition at the high school on the 5th, the 6th. I think this was started last, was last year the first year for the science expo, Mr. Tumino? Or was it before? Couple of years ago, so it's relatively new. But a great event, a science expo at the high school main gym, 7:00 PM on April 6th. We will be at a board meeting, but maybe after that, we can head over to the science expo to see all the creativity and good work our kids are doing. And then the high school will have its teen idol competition on Saturday, April 8th. So just some things that are coming up. And just a plug, two things. We will put out again a link on Friday, if you want to subscribe to our calendars, how you can get the feed to your iPhone or Android device. We've sent that out before. But it could add it to your calendar. But I, if you're an app kind of person, you can also download our Strongsville City Schools app. You can subscribe to the buildings. So for like somebody like me, I subscribe to every building. And I can look at today, whatever, it's March 16th, and see every event that's going on in the entire district by the calendar function right on the main page. And that's been a very, Dan shared with me the downloads earlier for the app, and we're getting good, good usage from that. So that's another place where people can keep up to date on what's going on and around the district. And it's not, it doesn't feel like spring, but spring sports are starting hard to believe. And just some updates, you know, baseball first pitch will be on March 28th. And then you could see lacrosse, softball, tennis, boys tennis, track and field at the high school and middle school are starting in the next couple of weeks, or first week of April. So spring sports will be up and going. Make sure to check those calendars because they get canceled all the time and they get rescheduled all the time because of the weather. So just some highlights for the next few weeks, what's going on about the district.
Excellent. It's still hard to get sports scores on a timely basis.
We are, we were, I tell you what, whoever called this snow day messed up a bunch of our meetings. But we had, we have an athletic council that we meet at, at a district level. And I know I saw that's on Mr. Jawan's agenda, is the high school athletics website and some proposals he has to upgrade that and obviously keep the scores up to date.
Okay.
So that's on the list.
I'll tell you what was really kind of cool, Mr. Ribeau. Last week or two weeks ago, we had to meet the coach with Coach Sereno. And it was raining, as you know, pretty heavily. But there was lacrosse games going on out on our field, which never would have happened last year. So it was kind of neat that our kids could still be out there playing,
Yep.
even though it was pouring down. Our field wasn't wrecked. You know, so that, that was just really rewarding to see that.
Exactly one of the reasons why we needed it there. Um, going on to business services, we do have one item for your vote and that's, uh, an amendment to our owner's agent contract, uh, and that would come from our construction fund. Uh, be it resolved by recommendation, that you, uh, approve the execution, execution of a change order with RFC Contracting for providing additional services as directed by the district, uh, during the construction project, extension of the contract until all work was completed and to provide services to implement a maintenance program for all facilities at the cost of eighty-two thousand dollars. And that contract amendment could be found in Exhibit F.
On the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
If I could make a comment, Mr. Neso, and I, and eighty-two thousand dollars is a lot of money. Um, and Richard and I have had this conversation quite a bit, especially, um, with Polaris and the construction projects that we've got going on. Um, I want to thank RFC Contracting. They and that team personally saved this district hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I won't go into the, the details, but if anybody ever has those questions, please let me know. Through bid packaging, they checked every single change order, they quantified every individual dollar amount. They did an amazing job to help us build a, a middle school that will be there for the next thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years. So, they did an amazing job. They, they saved us five times, six times what we spent on them for their job. And Roger was at every single meeting, so I want to thank him a lot.
Not to mention the, the bus garage project.
Absolutely, everything. He did a great job.
And then all part of this money is for, um, to develop a maintenance program, to keep our new facilities, the high school, and especially the new middle, the brand new middle school, to keep that in the condition that it's in. So, he's gonna help us with preventative maintenance process, so that we can make sure we keep that all, um, respect the dollars that were, that were given to us. Um, any other comments and other discussions? George?
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, uh, we have Aaron, uh, with the curriculum report for the month. Aaron?
Hi, good evening. Um, I have three items tonight under curriculum. First one is very exciting to me and will be to the students, um, in the coming years. It's a secondary English language arts textbook adoption. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that textbooks be adopted for secondary English language arts as presented in Exhibit G. Um, these materials have been recommended by professional staff, reviewed by the Curriculum Advisory Committee. And I do want to say our last language arts adoption for the secondary was in two thousand and five, so we are due. Um, second item is overnight trip for the Strongsville High School mock trial team. And be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, permission be granted to the mock trial team members to travel to Columbus to participate in the state competition. The, the competition will take place March eighth through the eleventh of two thousand and seventeen. Expenses were paid using school funds. And the third item tonight under curriculum would be an out-of-state trip for the boys varsity soccer team. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the boys varsity soccer team to travel to Traverse City, Michigan, to participate in a soccer competition, September first and second of two thousand and seventeen. Transportation via chartered motor coach and expenses paid with proceeds from the Adidas National Soccer Showcase. That is all for curriculum.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Uh, next, we have Director of Special Education, Andy Trillo, with the Student Services Report. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. Three items for your consideration this evening. Uh, settlement resolution, there's an amendment for, uh, one of our settlements that we have. Also, number two is extended school year for the recommendation of the superintendent, that you approve extended school year. This is, um, something we do every year to ensure that a free and appropriate public education is provided to students in the summer if they so need it, um, as dictated by federal law and requirements. Number three is Medina Creative Accessibility. We currently have a contract with Medina. This is an amendment, um, of section three of that, which impacts how much we pay them. Um, they've been impacted by some labor implementate- law implementations that have required to pay, um, some of our students above subminimum wage and we have to help Medina pick up the difference. So, it goes up to seventeen dollars to pay them per student. Currently, we have no students there earning a wage, but this, sometimes in the springtime, we do send some students there.
Okay.
And I do have a question.
Yeah.
So, as, and it'd be interesting, I, I would like if you could work with George. A lot of the special needs is mandated by the state or federal government, right? The things we do, the IPs, all that kind of stuff. I'd be interested, as our state funding gets reduced, right? And, but yeah, I'm sure those mandates aren't gonna change it all, right? So, we're still gonna provide the same great care for these great kids that we always do. But I'd love to see, I'd love to see the total budget for the special needs organization, right? And I know we, we broke that out in the, in your massive book that was on my mantle for a while. I know we broke that out. But it'd be interesting to see what portion or what total dollar amount, not portion, what total dollar amount is mandated and what, you know, what, what isn't.
What remains unfunded.
And then that, you know, so that we could take a look at what those, the special need mandate is and then just to compare that to the state funding we get. And then it just gives us more ammo when we have our discussion. Okay, so you're mandating that we do this, four million dollars and then your, your total state aid is six, you know, and then two is left for whatever, you know? I'd just love to see that, that number and I wonder if you and, uh, George could work that up.
George will see you in the morning.
I'm not proposing that we change anything we do, but I would just like to have that number. We should have that in our pocket.
And we're, we're, we're close to that. George and I go over those things, but we can get more specifics.
All right.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you, Andy, and Mr. Neso, number one needs a vote.
On the motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Richard.
Second.
Second Duke, any discussion? Uh, take a vote.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then next, uh, we have Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report for the month. Jenny?
Good evening. I have the following items under Human Resources for your consideration. Under E one, we have two retirements of certificated, uh, staff. We'll recognize them in May, but the retirement of Peter Lambert, a social studies teacher and Spanish teacher, um, assigned to Strongsville High School, and Michael Sack, social studies teacher, assigned to Strongsville High School. Under E two, we have several appointments of non-certificated staff and we have several, uh, substitutes, um, one certificated substitute and several non-certificated substitutes. Continuing under E two, we have certificated supplemental contracts. Um, many of these, um, I'm sorry. Um, under E two, we have our non-certificated supplemental contracts there. We have a certificated tutor appointment. Under E three, we have a stipend for our early entrance screening kindergarten, a school psychologist to perform that for us. Under, uh, E four, we have a job share. Under E five, several changes in hours of non-certificated staff. Under E six, we have a change in status of non-certificated staff. Under E seven, we have one continuing contract recommendation. Under E eight, several unpaid, um, medical leaves of certificated and non-certificated. Under E nine, we have several medical leaves of our certificated staff and medical leaves of our non-certificated staff. Under E ten, we have volunteer coaches. And continuing under E ten, we have volunteer chaperones. And one thing I did want to mention, at your seat, um, under Human Resources, you have a list of all of our head coach applicants for our fall season. Um, they were required to fill out a survey for the fall sport in which they applied, um, and their goals, um, that they have set to be able to move the program forward, um, and how they intend to monitor progress toward those goals that they set for themselves. Continuing, another question, what is their plan to collaborate, um, with our high school sports and our youth program sports, for example, the middle school ones that you have? Um, also, some of the other questions we asked was their record as a head coach. Have they held, uh, previous coaching positions? Their accomplishments, their coaching philosophy and why they have that philosophy. Um, community activities that they may, um, be wanting to support or, or looking forward to in their upcoming season. Um, and then what support can be there to help them do their job better? Um, so those are just some of the questions that we've asked our head coaches, um, to submit, um, so that we can continue to monitor, um, our athletics. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
Nope, I like this. I'm gonna go through it.
Uh, and then finally, under technology, there's nothing specifically listed there, uh, but I do want to compliment Vicki and the tech department. They were, Brian was in Columbus. Jenny and George, wherever you were today, at a treasurer, uh, uh, uh.
Amherst.
Amherst. Somebody had to stay here, so I was here in Strongsville today. But Vicki, um, she was down at Neo Tech. She presented, she had two sessions that she presented on gifts or, how do you say, gifs, gifts? Gifts and memes. Uh, and then Makerspace, uh, Kim Scott, uh, high school math teacher presented. Uh, Mark Smithberger, our high school principal, presented. Did anybody else present? We had two other tech coaches, uh, Sean Mason and Kim Arrington, um, went down there. And then there's another tech conference you guys are going to, that I think we've got the majority of our, it'll be pretty much presented by Strongsville City Schools as to, uh, a lot of the sessions. She just got that, uh, notice yesterday, so, uh, good day to learn, good day to present and showcase what's going on in Strongsville and, um, the great work that she's been doing and also in terms of the Makerspace is, I think, uh, what do we have, Independence, come visit us, North Royalton, come visit us, Copley has to be rescheduled because of the, the, the snow day. Um, but, you know, we kind of talked, uh, a handful of years ago when we all got together to say, school districts should, should need to start coming to visit us to see what we're doing in Strongsville and, um, we're starting to see that happen, so that's, that's exciting. And then due to the work of the great people we have, uh, with us in the district. So, thank you, Vicki, um, for your leadership there and although she doesn't have a report, I'll continue to report on what you're doing. And with that, that concludes the superintendent's report. Mr. Neso?
Nice job. It's good to see, it's good to see them come to us.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
So, that's a good compliment.
But none of the schools that are getting more money, none of them should come.
We'll charge them.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, that brings us to our reports. Polaris?
Thank you. Uh, on March twenty-ninth, uh, from nine AM to twelve PM at the Polaris Career Center in Middleburg Heights, it'll be the tenth year of the Cuyahoga County Career Fair. Um, this is in collaboration with, uh, Cuyahoga County's Workforce Opportunity Resource Center. Job seekers are, uh, recommended to dress to interview and bring multiple copies of your resume. There'll be up to seventy-five employers with job openings. Some of the industries that'll be represented, represented is healthcare, manufacturing, services, construction. And there'll also be some apprentice, apprenticeship opportunities. Um, I've had the pleasure of being at the last two. Um, it is a great, uh, job fair. You know, I, I imagine job seekers have been to the job fair where it just seems like everybody's milling about, but there are employers there that are looking for, uh, employees. It's a great opportunity and that is March twenty-ninth, uh, Wednesday, March twenty-ninth next week. And then, uh, it brings me a great pride and pleasure to announce that, uh, a few weeks ago, our Polaris culinary team went to Columbus and, uh, for the eighth straight year, Polaris took top honors in the culinary, culinary team event and will represent Ohio again at the national competition this year in Charleston, South Carolina, uh, April twenty-eighth to April thirtieth. Uh, quick shout out and congratulations to, uh, two of our Strongsville High School students. Uh, Chris Ritz, who's a senior this year, and then Brandon Schifferly, who's a junior. Both of them were on the, uh, on the team. Uh, in addition, Polar- the Polaris team, uh, placed second in the management event, which is another event there. It's always fun, because they, uh, it is like, uh, a TV show, uh, cooking competition. Um, they are allowed, uh, one hour and two butane burners to complete the task. No ovens, no electrical appliances are permitted. They have to submit their, uh, recipes and, and the financial information on the dish ahead of time. And, you know, so it's just like, uh, Top Chef and all those other competitions. Uh, it's a lot of fun, but we're also very proud of the, uh, of the accomplishments of the Polaris team and especially our two, uh, Strongsville High School students. Um, and it is also serious. Two Polaris students, uh, were, uh, honored at that particular event. Uh, Teresa Napier, from another high school, was the Outstanding Culinary Student Award and Thomas Vitato was the Outstanding Management Student Award. Both of them received eight thousand dollar scholarships to Sullivan University. And, uh, Polaris students, uh, through this competition, to date, have been awarded three hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars in scholarships to different culinary, uh, colleges. Uh, so, congratulations to them and we look forward to another great showing, uh, at the national event. And then just good luck and congratulations. Our Polaris business professionals are at the state competition today and tomorrow. So, good luck to them and we expect great things from them. And that completes my Polaris report.
You provided your legislation.
Oh, there's, there's never, we should never miss an opportunity to remind people that they should contact their, uh, state senator and their state representative and, uh, it's short and sweet. We've sent them over fifty million dollars in two thousand and fourteen. We should be held harmless in the next two years. And that completes my report.
And Cameron, you were last, what, what, was it your weekly report or what report was it that had the two perfect letters? That were already set up for the legislators? You just printed them, signed them, mailed them?
Yeah, we sent that out to all of our staff and community and parents. Uh, it was just a separate email to the community.
Okay.
Um, yep, all you have to do is print, sign and mail or print an email or, or attach an email. Uh, so those were in the message sent out last Friday.
Okay, excellent. All right, that brings us to Board Liaison Reports. Jane, uh, City Council?
City Council, okay. Well, their meeting didn't last as long as this meeting has, but, uh, uh, they covered a bunch of their routine, um, projects that they do all the time as far as making sure the roads are striped and putting bids out for that. Excuse me, but two interesting things, they, um, you may be of interest of you, everyone, is there's going to be a public hearing on April seventeenth regarding, um, zoning in front of the Great Escape on Route eighty-two to have an outlaw parcel there. So, if anybody has any opinions about that, um, come to the City Council meeting on April seventeenth and have your voice be heard, or you can always contact your councilperson and, um, let them know how you feel about that. And, um, they also are entering into a contract to renovate four locker rooms at the, um, Earnfort Recreation Center. So, those are what's happening in the city.
How about, uh, was it you or George went to the PTA?
George got to, uh, attend the PTA meeting.
I did, um, and the next one will be when I return back from spring break. Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Was it fun?
It was great, it was, it was fun. I, well, kind of. I sat next to Robin, so, you know, of course I was taken care of when I was there, so it was nice.
She held them at bay for you?
Um, how about, uh, student achievement?
Oh, okay, great. Student achievement. Well, this month, I'm gonna do something a little different, um, as, carrying on with the theme of all our community involvement, I wanted to highlight some of the extra outside of the classroom, um, activities that students can participate in in high school. Uh, these are, um, made possible through the generous volunteering hours of staff members that do not get paid for this. Um, and some of the, uh, groups that I wanted to highlight were, um, the mock trial. That's, uh, going, that just happened. Um, the Model UN, which twenty-seven students participate in. Uh, they also do the Ohio Council of Teachers of Mathematics Contest. They do, uh, the American and Government Program through the American Legion that we just discussed with our flag donation. They have The Lantern, which is the student newspaper. Um, I do believe that's a paid position, though, isn't The Lantern advisor? But that's something that's outside of the classroom, that is, um, available to every student at the high school to participate in if they so choose. They have art contests, um, there's the Chemistry Olympiad, there's Academic Challenge, which is coming up in April. So, I just wanted to highlight some of the, um, outside of the classroom things that are also available to our students at the high school. And then I got a breaking news from, uh, PTA. Sorry, George, you didn't get this, uh, thunder. Uh, PTA, um, participates in the Annual Reflections Contest, uh, which is an arts contest and it's open to all students in the district. And we've just notified that one of our eighth grade students took first place in the whole state of Ohio for a piano composition, so in the music competition, composition. So, that's going to go on to state contest, so hopefully. So that's going to go on to state contest, so hopefully they will do well. And that ends my student achievement report. No visual aids today, sorry.
And if anybody was at convocation, Vardan, who was the eighth grader who spoke at convocation, he was the young man who won that for the PTA reflection, so if, I mean, what a talented kid.
And I'd love to have him play the composition for us.
Yeah, yeah, so proud of what he does. Yeah.
Okay, and that brings us to the Education Foundation. I did not attend the meeting last week, I believe it was. Did, anything to report from there?
I was there.
I know you were.
I, I was there. You know, some of the updates I gave were updates we've spoken about at the board meeting. They are, the first Saturday in May is the Jackeys and Julips. They're, they're planning on that. They're also, you know, they're talking about, obviously, a lot of the fundraising efforts they're going to are towards funding the field trips for our elementary's school next year and a middle school trip, as well as the Makerspace. They've submitted a grant, Vicki submitted a grant on behalf of Makerspace dollars. The SEF just also submitted a grant on behalf of the Makerspace, so a lot of discussion was placed there, as well as getting ready for this season of scholarships and allocating those to our graduating seniors. So they're hard at work on not only school-based projects, but getting ready for the great work they do with scholarships.
Excellent. Okay, that brings us to Finance Committee. There was no Finance Committee meeting. I don't believe there was a Policy Committee meeting and facilities?
Our next meeting is this coming Thursday, and I will not be here, so you'll, you're the alternate, so you have to attend. I will be out of town, so.
Look forward to it.
Have fun at the facilities.
You don't want to die, do you?
No, I, I will not be, so.
No problem. All right, and that brings us to Consent Calendar. All items marked with an asterisk are voted on in one vote. There are no corrections or modifications to any of those. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any discussion on any of the items? George, could you take, roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, that brings us to Board of, Board of Education and other, I have one other. Josh, I reached out to you via LinkedIn right before, so if you want to connect, come on back and accept my invitation, and that's all I got.
Nothing.
Nothing.
No others.
Excellent. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is April sixth. That's here, and then we have one on April twentieth, which is also here at seven o'clock. We do have need for executive session, I believe, under evaluation.
To consider the employment of a public employer official.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
How long is land?
They extended it this year. Goes through Christmas.
I'll second.
Many discussion, we'll go in there at nine o'clock, no business afterwards, so.
We got to take a vote, Carl?
No, take a vote.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Rosen?
Yep.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.